Thank you, everyone, and welcome and good evening and thanks for joining us today for our next in the series of monthly town halls. Before I hand over to Alan for the tonight, I would like to acknowledge today is a special day for all the Canadians. Today's our faster tooth and reconciliation national day. It's a very special day for the indigenous people and for the Canadians. Given the very tragic news coming in from the residential schools over the past few months. And I think our national flag is still flying at a half mast. So I urge to everyone engage with the process and educate themselves. There's a lot of stuff available. National Film Board has a lot of documentaries and movies and a lot of books. And Truth and Reconciliation Commission Report is worth reading and the 94 Calls to Action. We should all be familiar with that one. And also this week, one very important book was released called Unreconciled by Jesse Vinte, who's one of the most prominent voices on the indigenous front. I think he's the current Chair of Arts Council of Canada. And I urge you to browse the book and buy it. So I will read Land Acknowledgement before we begin our meeting today. As many of us are settlers on this land, it's our collective responsibility to pay respect and recognize that this land is the traditional territory of the Mississauga of the credit first nations and the Huron. And we are here because this land was occupied. We also recognize that the region of Peel is a home to many first nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples today. And recognizing that this space occupies colonized first nations territories and out of respect for the rights of the indigenous people, past, present, and future. It's our collective responsibility to recognize our colonial histories and present implications and to honor, protect, and sustain this land. Thank you. With that, I'll hand over the control to Alan, who will be hosting today's debate discussion. And if you have any comments, you can post them in the chat to me or to Alan. We'd like to keep the debate going smoothly. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Herminde, and thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's Engage P O virtual town hall. On it's essentially a sort of campaigning for office 101 sort of a seminar, if you will. I know that election fever has been on our minds the last few weeks or months or so. And now that the federal election is over, while I think most of us want to take a break and relax and enjoy the rest of the holiday coming up. There is a provincial election next year in 2022 as well as municipal elections as well in the same year. And some of you out there might be thinking of getting involved in some way, perhaps even running for office yourself. And I think a lot of us don't exactly know how to go about that or what it's like to go through the hustings and what what happens to your life once you become a candidate. So I'm very pleased to welcome three very special guests here tonight. They've all run for office before. Two of them not unsuccessfully, let's not sugarcoat that. And one has been very successful in running for office. In fact, she has won, I think. She's been winning since 1991. I think that's the best way to put it. So I'd like to introduce you to my, no, for full disclosure, he's a good friend of mine. I've known him for almost like seven, eight years now, Joel Horneck. He has run for city council in Mississauga in the Ward 4 2015 by-election as well as in Ward 6 in 2018. Rabia Hudder, she's a community activist and she ran for also in the 2015 Ward 4 by-election. And she's also running Ward 6, but back in 2014, as I understand, against the sitting councillor. And finally, we have current Mississauga City Councillor from Ward 9, Pat Sado. Pat has been in office since 1991. So she is a veteran and as she has spoke, as she has, sorry, as she has mentioned on several public forums recently or just in publicly in general. She is not planning to run for reelection next year in 2022. So I thought she'd be the perfect person to come attend and impart her wisdom upon for those of us who might be interested in standing as a candidate. So with that, I would like to let each of them give, you know, give them about two minutes or so to introduce themselves. Let us know a little bit about their background, just, you know, just who they are and, you know, a little bit about themselves before we begin the our questioning. So if councillor Sado, would you like to introduce yourselves to the audience?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alan. And thank you for inviting me to be part of this this evening. And with two people that I've known for some time, Rabia and Joe, both really, really good citizens of the city of Mississauga. So I'm pleased to see them both here. So I ran for council in 1991. And it was kind of a last minute decision when the incumbent councillor decided that he was not going to run again. And I had an entire weekend to make my decision if I was going to run for council. And it was something that I had never ever thought I would ever do because I am in, I am so non-political. I don't like politics. I don't consider myself a politician. I don't follow party politics and you know, at the time I was doing a lot of volunteer work in the community. But I was also working at the city of Mississauga in, it was called Public Affairs then, it was the Communications Department. So when the councillor came to me and said, you know, if you're ever going to run, now's the time and there's no incumbent. And I think that was the biggest lesson for anyone is you always try to run when there's no incumbent. And we decided I would go for it. And I had five opponents, or I should say, five of us running at that time. And I was very fortunate to get 47% of the vote. So I was really thrilled. But I, as I said, I don't consider myself a politician. I consider myself a representative for the citizen of my community. And that's how I've always, I've always done my job. And yes, I am retiring next year. It'll be 31 years in office when I retire. So I think it's time. I did announce it when I ran at the last election. So I'll leave it at that because I'm sure some of the questions will bring out other information.
Okay, thank you very much, Pat. Rabia, would you, I'd like to give you the floor, you know, just introduce yourself, let people know who you are.
Okay, so my name is Rabia Hudder. I'm a resident of Mississauga. Well, since I was six years old, I always joke that I've been living in Mississauga longer than Hazelwood's mayor. And that's definitely true now that she's retired. So I grew up in Mississauga in the Mississauga Valley community. I'm, you know, an immigrant child. I recognize many names on this forum that I can certainly connect with. I identified myself as a hyphen with many hijabs. I'm a Muslim, Punjabi, Pakistani, Canadian, woman, wife, mother, yada, yada, yada. And I have a disability. Yes, I engage in activism around disability rights. I'm blind. I have siblings with disabilities. And I've made my, you know, life's journey all about making change. I have sort of adopted a couple of new ways of describing myself. And those are that I'm a social entrepreneur and I'm also a systems disruptor. I run a nonprofit charity based out of Mississauga called Dean Support Services. I'm its CEO, but I am also now the National Director for Disability Without Poverty, advocating for the Canada Disability Benefit as a supplement for people with disabilities living in poverty. Yes, in 2014, I foolishly decided to run against an incumbents. And for somebody who is not very party loyal, doesn't know how to follow the leader in in party politics real well, who doesn't do party politics real well, running a campaign with zero experience. And coming third was not too bad, a very low budget campaign. And then in 2015, there was no incumbent. It was my ward that I live in, Ward 4. And I said, I have to run. So I ran. And up until the last moment on the ballot, I was one woman standing against 26 men or something. And Joe was one of them. So in terms of that election, I was pegged one of the top candidates. I came fifth, as I like to say, after four white able-bodied men, and I consider that a victory.
Okay, thank you very much for sharing that, Rabia. And Joe, finally, you know, let people know, you know, introduce yourself and tell us a little about Joe Horneck.
Okay, well, I was one of the bums who went traipsing into her ward, by the way, so as she said. Yeah, so I'm Joe Horneck. I've lived in Mississauga about 10 years now. I've lived in a number of places. I grew up in Windsor. I've lived all over Ontario, a little bit of Quebec for a couple of years for job reasons. And same thing, I moved to the UK for three years for education and then stayed for a couple of years to work. I've got three kids and a wonderful wife who support me endlessly. I'm a finance professional. So I've held a lot of different leadership positions within the financial industry at both large and small financial companies. Right now, I'm the Director of Finance Operations for FCT. So it's a title insurance company based out of Oakville. And so that's that. And I'd love to be involved in my community. I love to be involved in different charity boards. Arma House is my one that I spend the most time on. It's a women's shelter in southern Mississauga that serves the region of Peel. So if you can believe it, we have nine apartments serving 1.5 million people. So it's obviously ridiculously underserviced. Thankfully, we're undergoing a very large, I'm doing this as a sales pitch, you know, just in case anyone wants to get involved on that side. We're undergoing a really dramatic expansion coming up, which hopefully will be done sometime in like early summer next year, which is very exciting to double our capacity. So one of the things that motivates me to be involved in politics is seeing the effect that good political officials can make on the community.
Okay, thank you very much, Joe. So just to let everyone know, if you have any questions, you can put them in the Zoom chat. And Herminde will be helping me moderate the questions later on so we can ask questions for you. Or, yeah, or if, you know, if you want to open the floor, if you want to just ask directly, you can always use the reaction function and raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you when the time comes. So during your, well, during your introduction, some of you already kind of unveiled the reasons, sort of the reasons why you decided to run. And I heard that one of them was the incumbent is stepping down. I think a lot of people who have heard of politics before or have observed elections always wondered, why is like, you know, is why is it such a big deal that the incumbent is there? And why can't you just present your ideas if you think you're good? And, and, you know, just go for it, right? So I was just wondering, like, for each of you, there must have been a reason. I know maybe Pat already said this, but like, and I know I heard this line a lot. When it comes to asking women to run, they have to be asked more than once and maybe sometimes more than twice or three times before doing so because they see a lot of like obstacles. But I guess my main question is, my main question is, why did you decide to run? Like, was there a specific issue related to like the municipal government? That really was like, I don't know, the straw that broke the camel's back, where the like the final straw that said, okay, I'm good, I'm doing this. It's not just about whether it's just the incumbent stepping down or whether it's an open seat or whether, you know, you know, people, you know, there's, you have people around you that are like, you know, encouraging you, but there must be something that happened. And so I'm just wondering if like you want to share that and or like, you know, if that actually happened for you. So Joe, like, like, you know, I met you in like around 2014. And then I think your first election that you ran in municipally was 2015 by-election. So, I mean, as Rob, I think, as I mentioned before, there was like 26, 27 people in there. So there must have been something that made you think, I, Joe Horneck, I think I can, I can be the guy.
Yeah, I mean, so I think there's a, there's a few things about running for office. One, you know, you have to be, there has to be a little bit of confidence or even maybe a little bit of arrogance to say, I'm a person that should represent tens of thousands of people because I think I can do the best job. Like, you have to be a confident person. But I think, you know, you've mentioned like incumbency and a number of reasons like why. So for me, unlike Rabia and Pat, I have been a person who's been involved in a political party. And I have a lot of friends who are, and it's deeply important to me. So I've been around politics more, but at the same time, I shy away from actually wanting to run in a party context. Because as a municipal side, you have control of your own policy, your own representations. It's very, very, very different than the other levels of government. And I think that's refreshing. In particular, you know, just to kind of, you mentioned Ward 4 and Rabia's mentioned Ward 4. Why did I get an interest in that particular race? The non-incumbency was a big factor in the sense that having watched politics for so long at the municipal level, it is insanely hard to beat an incumbent. Their name recognition is by far and away the biggest thing. Because in every other election, you show up and you're like, well, I'm with the red team, I'm with the blue team, I'm with the orange team. And people will automatically go, that's my team. And you have an automatic base of support. Municipal is not like that at all. Getting people to know your name is very, very, very hard. And so that's why incumbency is so powerful. There's also other things around, you know, the financial side of it and, you know, having a network that's already in place to help with finances, right? Obviously, if you're an incumbent, that also has a benefit of people saying, well, they've been elected once. I haven't heard anything bad. I'm generally happy. So let's go again. And, you know, that's just kind of how incumbency, I think, works in terms of the power. Again, like my take was, I've always been involved in politics and been interested in it. That particular moment in time, I thought the downtown ward, which is two blocks from my house, in terms of, you know, ward boundaries do matter. I don't think you should run inherently too far from where you live because I think it does matter to represent where you are. In my case, it was two blocks from my house. So I didn't feel, I was kind of breaking my own rule about how far away I was. But anyways, I don't know, that was a rambling nonsense.
No, no, that's fine. That's great. Actually, I'm going to post a map of the city of Mississauga wards. Because, you know, coincidentally, Joe and Rabia ran in the same wards and
Different, once, twice, and once.
You mentioned Ward 4 is downtown and then you mentioned, and then, yeah, and then Ward 6 is actually more of a suburban area of the city. So it's actually almost a decent representation.
Yeah. And just to say about Ward 6, I do live in Ward 6. And again, on the incumbency factor, my intention was the incoming councillor said he was leaving. And unfortunately for me, he changed his mind.
Right. So, yeah, Rabia, like, you know, do you want to share? Like, I know you mentioned that a lot of like your, the driving motivations for you. You're, you've, you had a lot of like community activism, social entrepreneurship. Like, I mean, in 2014, like, I mean, you said you foolishly decided to run against the incumbent in Ward 6, which is councillor on Star. Though, was there like a specific issue that motivated you? Something that pertained to your work in the community or was there like some other reason?
Well, I got to a point in my life, in my work, in my activism, that I felt I needed to sit at the table where decisions are made to be able to impact them. My connection to the city of Mississauga more formally, I mean, way back in the 80s, I even did a co-op placement. But more formally started in or around 2003, when I joined the Accessibility Advisory Committee, which is a committee of council. And I chaired that committee for a good eight years. Over the course of that, I learned the ins and outs of the city. I met people from various departments. I learned about the business that happens there. And I had ideas. I also felt that, you know, when it came to diversity, equity, inclusion, human rights, the city of Mississauga wasn't there. It was lagging. There was no plan to really reflect the realities of grassroots communities within the city and within the region. So we had an all-white council and we have a population that's vastly diverse. So, you know, the idea that 200 families were running Mississauga was concerning to me. I felt that we needed new ideas, new energy, and people needed to feel that they could be heard and they could be, you know, they could, they could connect, they could reach City Hall. That was something that I was hearing from people was lacking. And that's why I decided to run. I felt that there was a disconnect in Ward 6. I felt that there wasn't a lot of work and advocacy being done for people living in Ward 6. And, you know, the general interests weren't being reflected. So that was my reason for running. I, you know, somebody once said, well, somebody often quotes, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So when issues are being discussed that impact you, if you're not at the table, you don't shape the discussion and the decision-making process or the outcome. And to me, that's really important, involving people from various communities in the decision-making process to have an outcome that's, you know, cohesive and appreciative by everyone is important.
Thank you very much, Rabia. So councillor Sado, so you mentioned before your reasons for running. Correct me if I'm wrong, you actually were, you, you actually worked for the city prior to becoming a candidate. So you went from, I guess, the bureaucracy or the civil service side of municipal government to going in as a candidate. So, I mean, like, did you, like, did you feel like there was an issue that you couldn't address in your professional role at the time? We're talking about 1991, so let's maybe try to put in context, the city was still growing. I think in your area, there was still open land that was to be developed in the coming decades ahead. So like, I don't, I'm not sure if you could correct me, like, which department, I wasn't sure which department you were working in at the time. But was there like some issues that you felt from your professional role that you couldn't address? That you felt that I need to get in council in order to do this? Or was there like something else other than just like, you know, oh, the incumbent's not running, maybe I have a shot and, you know?
Yeah, so it, it was kind of interesting. I want to just jump back for a second though, and I will address that. But when I said earlier that, you know, the best time to run is when there's no incumbent. In actual fact, the councillor who was in before me did beat an incumbent. And I had, as I said, I'm not very political, but I also lived in Mississauga Valleys when, back in the, in the early 70s, when, when that part of the city was just being built. And I worked on the councillor's campaign back then. I kind of got dragged into it because I was with the Residents' Association. And then when we moved to Meadowvale, I was again with the Residents' Association. And I used to go to City Hall and, and I've never really, although I am in the public now. But I don't mind public speaking, but I'll tell you, going to City Hall and standing in front of, of the members of council was pretty scary. And going to the region appeal, which I did twice on behalf of the community, was even scarier because, you know, you just had all these people glaring at you. And I kind of wondered sometime, were they even listening or were they even awake in some cases? And in some cases, they were not. So, you know, at the time when I was advocating for things in the, in the community, in the Meadowvale community, because it was brand new and we had nothing. I found that the incumbent councillor really wasn't doing much for the community. So I encouraged the, the other person to run for office because I wasn't interested at all. And I did all the communication and the public relations on his campaign. And he did win. But I have to say, I think he won two terms. So I was then working in the Communications Department. It was called Public Affairs at the time. And we did everything from organizing city events. I wrote speeches, I did newsletters and, you know, everything. I wrote reports. I was given some portfolios of establishing Crime Prevention Association, Road Safety, which I'm still involved with both today after 30 years. But, you know, most of the people that I'm going to refer to aren't with the city anymore. So I'm going to be very blunt. I would write a report, you know, a member of council, what I was seeing was a member of council would ask for something to be dealt with. And it was very obvious what the concern was. And I was given a report to write. And the city manager of the day changed the report to the point where, which was, you know, that happened, bosses change reports. But when the report went to council, it did not actually address the issue that the councillor had. And it was basically, you know, a nice thing, do nothing. And there was no action to be taken from it. And that really annoyed me. And I guess I started getting, you know, I couldn't do much because I was, you know, I was junior staff. So I, when the opportunity came up, I thought, you know what, I can do a lot more if I'm at the table making decisions and reading these reports and actually making sure that what comes to council is what was asked for. And I have to tell you, the day after I was elected, I bumped into the city manager and my boss, my director in the elevator. And I turned around, I couldn't resist. I turned around and I said, you know, well, it's really darn nice being your boss for a change. When I told my husband, I said, you said that? Like, yeah, I don't know where that came from. But, but yeah, I, you know, I, like, as Rabia said, you know, when you are one of the decision makers, when you're able to put your hand up and, and, you know, and make, make your vote count. Or if you're able to bring something that the community needs to council's attention and work through it. That, that's really, you know, that's the best thing that a member of council can do. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that.
I gotta say something here, Alan. And the thing I will say is Pat reads those reports and knows the details. The details are, you know, the devil's always in the details. And always, always, I think, encourages everybody around her to critically think about issues rather than just do, you know, superficial stuff.
Yeah, one other thing I was thinking about when I was listening to councillor Sado was, you know, both especially in her first run, one of the things she had was knowledge of the issues. And I think, you know, that's one of the things, like, I don't think, I spent a crazy amount of time watching council. And before I put myself forward, I watched council probably five years, every single, I'll call them episodes. And, you know, like, every single time. Because I think if you want to put yourself forward, you need to know the issues. And when you do, that is another power of an incumbent. They know the issues. And councillor Sado, when she put herself forward the first time, working for the city had that understanding, which is so important when you go and knock on the doors and try to communicate with total strangers, why in the world they should trust you with their vote. So, and the other thing, the last thing I'd just say is, you know, we talk about running against incumbent councillors and that it's a great chance. Not every victory has to actually result in a win. Sometimes you have an issue that you're super passionate about. And not being the first person to get the most votes doesn't necessarily mean you've lost. If you were bringing awareness to an issue, especially if it's like a neighborhood level issue where you know that there's an action happening or an issue like racism and cultural diversity that Rabia brought forward, like, sometimes making noise is enough, even if you don't win. So if anyone's thinking about running, you have to go into thinking about that is, what is a victory for me? And that is not always, I got the most votes, I would argue.
Yeah, that's a very good point. And I'm a bit of a numbers guy when it comes to election results. So I just want to put this out there. Councillor Sado mentioned her first election in 1991, where she got 47% of the vote, which actually is quite impressive for a first-time candidate. I don't think councillor has ever dropped below 75% in her subsequent reelections. In fact, I think her most I think her most toughest, toughest uh competitor was the um Len Little, the owner of Lucy's Seafood Kitchen. And he ran about, I think twice against her and she still came away about sixty percent of the vote, so that's very impressive. And as for Joe, if I want to give him a shameless plug here, uh, in twenty eighteen in Ward six. Joe came within two hundred thirty votes of defeating Ron Star. Uh, he was uh. It was the closest race in Mississauga for a council ward that did not have an influence. By former Mayor McCallion, let's just put that out there. And I believe he was named the councillor in waiting by John Stewart from the Mississauga News. Anyway, random.
I forgot that.
Random local election trivia. Uh, let's get down to some of the more um, uh, nitty gritty in, in terms of stuff on the campaign trail. Um, we're in this environment of social media and also social distancing with. The advent of COVID nineteen, so like we just saw a federal election where I think, you know, you still had candidates going door to door. But probably not as much, you've seen uh candidates renting out an entire studio in a hotel room. So they can just do like uh teleconferences uh, within, within the safe bubble. Um, that wasn't the case back in like the early nineties or even just, oh my gosh, not even just. Just even within the last election, I mean, social media is an important component these days for communications for a candidate. But that, nothing really beats like going door knocking and just meeting people face to face and getting in touch with people. So I guess my, my next question would be like, you know, what were some of the good things? And some of the maybe bad or slash ugly things you encountered on the campaign trail? That uh, you saw that you, you want to advise people that who are interested in running, that this is what you might. Be facing if you take this leap. Uh, let's start with our councillor Sado.
Okay, um, so one, one of the hardest things that I found to do. When I, when I first ran and even in subsequent campaigns is to go to someone's door. And ask them to vote for me. I could, I could go to someone's door and say, you know, I'm, I'm here for so and so. Will you vote for them? But I always find it very hard to ask people to, to vote for me. And my, my, uh, my campaign people would say, well, did you ask for signs? And I said, no. You know, I really didn't, I just didn't, I, I just couldn't ask them to put a sign on their front lawn. I found that really, really hard. So I don't like election signs anyway, but um, I think I traditionally have. You know, very, very few, even from day one, very, very few election signs. First campaign I ran on, I think I. Think I took a loan for five thousand dollars because there were no, there were no donations coming in. Um, and, but I've always run very lean campaigns because I do all my own writing, I do all my own designing. Of brochures and I find the cheapest way of printing stuff and getting signs, I do a lot of that. But um, you know, I, I, I found the first campaign in particular, and, and even after that. That most people were just very, very friendly at the door. Um, you know, I'd ask them what their issues were, we'd have a good discussion. Um, I tended to spend too much time talking to people at the door. And I was reprimanded for that because I was told you go up and you give one and a half minutes and you're gone. And that's not me, you know, if someone has an issue, I'm going to stand there and talk to them about it. Um, because you know, that, that's why I'm, I'm in this office, but. Um, I had a few that, you know, people yelled at me and, you know, said uh, you didn't do this. And I'm trying desperately to think what that issue was, you know? Um, and it just, you know, it wasn't coming to mind, but I had one lady yell at me and yell and scream and I went back later and I thought, well. We did do a lot for it, just wasn't really what she wanted, you know, as much. But I found, I personally find that very upsetting. And even though I had fifty people. You know, were friendly and supportive and everything else, it's that one that sticks in your head at the end of the day. And you're right, Joe, you go to bed and it just keeps going around, around your head, like this one person doesn't like me. And I think that um, I, I don't think I ever developed a thick skin, but uh, I was told you really. You really have to, to some degree. Um, you know, you have to stay yourself, but it's not easy. It is really hard to put yourself out there. And have someone tell you that they don't like you and right to your face, you know, maybe slam the door in your face. Um, I had that happen just once, but it's hard. I mean, it is really hard. So I think anyone running for office. You, you need to be prepared for all of those things. There's some weird things that I've heard. You know, people answering the door naked and stuff like that. I never came across that, but I know a few people that did. I, I know one candidate who did, you know, and it was just like, oh my god. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think I've heard stories about something like that too, but um, yeah. Um, Rabia, um, would you like to share any uh, interesting uh, stories from your time on the campaign trail?
Well, I, I hear a lot of what Pat's saying and, and I certainly echo it. Um, I mean, we ran two very rapid campaigns. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of learning. Um, you know, talking to people is fun, so you have to like people if you're gonna run. Because you have to do a lot of talking to them. And not all of them are gonna like you, absolutely. Um, for me, I think it was, you know. Um, people needing to understand that, yeah, I'm blind and I can do the job. Yeah, I cover my hair and I can speak, you know? Um, so, so I had a lot of stereotypes to break when engaging with people. Um, so I had, you know, and I had my challenges with door knocking because. Somebody walked with me to people's doors. Uh, but I did it, you know, I did it, and I did it with a lot of young people as well. Uh, youth, uh, you know, it's a family affair also. So it really brings you together with your family and friends, you know, I, I ran very low budget campaigns. And I, you know, use my living room as my office. Um, I had people in and out of my house and, you know, my kids were um distributing flyers and. Uh, my husband was putting in signs and, you know, every kid in my life was recruited in some way or another and. You know, got their community service hours in. Um. So there are, you know, there are always going to be people who also want to just keep you lingering because they don't want you knocking on doors. So they will talk and talk and talk, and I was told that that's actually a technique that's used by people who are supporting other candidates. And that did happen to me on one or two occasions and, you know, I also feel very responsive to people when they bring up issues. So I want to help problem solve, but at some point you have to recognize that, you know, you, you just got to move on politely.
Yeah.
So that's a big. I think the, I think the universal standard is like, if you spend more than five minutes, you probably should start moving along.
Yeah, you got a lot of houses, you got a lot of doors to knock on.
Yeah.
You know, the mistake we made was we knocked on every door. And what we learned, especially in the Ward four election. Uh, even though we're, you know, at, we're independent candidates, party politics creeps in. And there are people who strategically knock on doors, and then there are newbies who tried to cover every door possible. So, you know, that was also some, some learning of how involved, you know, the liberals and the conservatives get. Into our municipal elections to, to, to be very truthful, no matter how much. We claim that these elections are nonpartisan, we're independent candidates, there is that influence involved.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I also found, I was gonna say, I also found that um. Even though it's a municipal election, you'd roll up to a door and some people would be like, are you the liberal, the conservative? And they're trying to place you right away, regardless of anything that's about to come out of your mouth, but like, well, I only vote this way and that way. That's the end of it. Um, yeah, I mean, a few things that uh, Pat commented I thought were really uh, good, you know, I think. You know, people who say a minute and a half at a door, maybe for a party election, because you know. At a higher level, what a liberal is and what a conservative is and, and what that leader in a national debate that you just watched is all about. So maybe you can get away with that when there's a party level election. Municipal, good luck, like, I don't know how you communicate anything meaningfully. About what, what is a Joe Horneck and why in the world would you trust a Joe Horneck? How do I know he's not a bum? He showed up at my door, who's gonna steal my tax dollars, right? You dumb. So I think you need to invest the time with people. And I'd say, you know, anyone, you know, on a checklist of things to do, if anyone is considering running for office. If you can't go and knock two neighborhoods before you submit your paperwork, you shouldn't be submitting your paperwork. Go and knock a, a random neighborhood in the area you're thinking about running, and if you can't get to the end of the street and still say, wow, I found that's fun, don't run. Because there's tons of candidates who, they get fifty votes, a hundred votes, two hundred votes. I'm not clear why, why they did it.
Yeah, I think, I think if I can add one more, one point here that I observed, um. I think temperament at, from the candidate is also very important, like you have to be able to, um, I guess emotionally control yourself. I remember in twenty eighteen, there was a lady running, I mean, a, a man. Uh, running against uh, councillor Sue McFadden in, in, Pat, uh, your neighbor, uh, when Ward ten. Uh, this gentleman apparently got into a fight on a front porch with a, a folder. Over a sign that he may or may not have torn down, that was actually from Ms. McFadden's campaign, so. Um, he went viral in the negative sense and uh, so that, that's an extreme example.
Yeah, I think, I didn't, I kind of didn't, yeah, I kind of didn't answer your question.
Like this, because like, you know, you, 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 you've had experience in like party politics and you run sort of as your own. Brand Joe Horneck as the candidate municipally, so like, do you have like thoughts on what makes a good candidate or? What makes a ca- bad candidate, if that can put it, if that's a proper way to put the question?
There's a lot. I think one thing I'd go back to um, was, you know, councillor Sado mentioned about having a thick skin, and I'll relay a very short story. Um, you know, towards the end of my Ward six campaign, I was feeling very good. I felt like I had momentum. I, I felt. I didn't know if I was gonna win, but I felt I was sort of close-ish and I don't know. And it was coming towards the end of the day, I'd already done my own particular neighborhood, which is a very small street. Um, but I was back at the house, because as Rabia says, you run all of this stuff out of your house. If you think you're gonna run it out of the campaign office, all of you are kidding yourselves. Um, I was back at the house just recharging and I saw a neighbor who I'd yet to be able to connect with. And I ran up to him and we'd always been, you know, when they're taking out the garbage or waving hi or saying things. And I said, you know. Can I count on your support? And he was there with his wife and they were about to get in their car, I assumed to go vote. And he said, Joe, I gotta tell you, absolutely not, no way in hell. I said. And, and this is where you need that emotional thick skin. I'm like. I don't understand, like, and I was gob, I was gobsmacked. I don't understand what, Joe, you know what? And just going back to your party politics comment, your friends with the Liberal MP, Liberals support abortion. I can't support you because you're friends with them. Wha- what has abortion got to do with municipal affairs? Absolutely nothing. And he knows that. Didn't matter to him. So, you know, you mentioned about a guy with a sign dispute. I'm telling you a neighbor who I smile to and wave at all the time. You know, so politics can be insanely personal and, you know, the highs and the lows of having a great day on the trail and, and. You know, getting a lot of great response and those low days when you just wonder why you're doing this. The low days, you need your family to be supporting you, you need your community to be supporting you. You can't just be a lone soul going out to the doors or you just won't make it. It's really hard, so you need a thick skin. Um, I mean, I think we've made a lot of other comments about like logistics, logistics in terms of like. Dollars and cents and things like that, and I, I don't think that's kind of worth getting into. I think the more important thing is having a core. Mission that you want to accomplish, is that a policy? Is it that you feel that you are going to be the greatest representative because you have spent the time, you know the issues? You've talked to the people and you know what they care about. Um, you know, you need that to get through things because you're gonna have the ups and downs, and when you're down, there's nothing in your life. Other than maybe a death in the family that will tell you how low you go.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Um, I got councillor Sado, I just want to ask you, um, so you've run, I, I think many campaigns in your thirty year. Career, like, the way Joe was describing um, certain people, how emotionally charged they are about an issue. Like, did you ever encounter anyone, um, let's say, let's say even one of your opponents that they came forward that actually had. A very strong issue or very, something that, that they have strong conviction in, that felt. I need to run against Pat Sado in order to advance this issue forward, like, did you ever encounter? Something like that or in um, like, and, and do you have any thoughts about like, when I asked Joe, like, what makes a good candidate, what makes maybe? A rather lousy candidate, you know?
Yeah, you, you know, it's interesting because um, two, two of the uh, two candidates in particular that ran against me. One of them, um, I thought we were really, really good friends, actually two of them. Um, I had great relationships with and they always took my election signs. We never had. Any arguments, any disagreements, and all of a sudden, they announced they were running against me for council. And it was, you know, like, why? Well, one, one of the, one of them just didn't even tell me why, and he did later, you know, like many, many years later. He came to me and said, I want to apologize for, for doing that. He said, I was just in a really low point in my life at that time, and that's what I did. You know, um, but it was like, why is he doing this? The, the other gentleman again had, um, I, I didn't know him tremendously well, but we had a good relationship. He always took my election signs, supported me in my, in my work, did distribution even of my flyers and there was. You know, no reason for him to run against me. Um, and we got to the all candidates meeting and he stood up there and he said. You know, I, I, these, these candidates, including councillor here, are just being bought by developers. And they take campaign money from developers and he said, you know, um. I, I would, and he tore up this, apparently it was a check, I don't know, but he tore up something that was supposed to be a check and he said. I won't take any money from developers because they would, you know, they would expect me to, to vote for them and et cetera, et cetera. So when I stood up, I said, well, yes, I do take funds from developers and I figure they may as well. You know, pay for city politics as they do across the entire city. And I said, and I just want to state though, that I have never, ever in all my years on council, voted for something. Just because someone supported my campaign, and as a matter of fact, one developer. When I'd sent, he was on the list of uh, campaign funding. And he wrote me back and he said, you know, I've always supported your campaigns, I've always donated to your campaign. And when I had a big application forward, you voted against me. And yeah, you know, there is my proof, like, you did not buy my vote, and then he included a donation for the campaign in there. But I, I said publicly to this other candidate, I said, well, I'm sorry that. You feel that by taking a donation, that you would feel compelled. To vote for anything that that person brought forward, and I said, personally, I feel I have more integrity than that. And I, I don't feel like I need to vote just because someone gives me money. And I said, that's where integrity comes to play in elections and politics. I sat down, so that was uh, but tho- those were really the only, but I, I do want to tell you a really funny story. Um, this is a good one. Uh, second or third campaign, the wife of the, of a former, former councillor ran against me. And we were at the Cable ten used to run the debates. So we were in the debate and her husband was, was outside in, in the room. So one of the, um, what they asked her, so why are you running for office against Pat? What has she done wrong? You know, kind of to your question, what has she done wrong? That compelled you to run against her? And her answer was, oh, she's done nothing wrong. I think she's done a really good job. I just think I could do a good job too. So I couldn't resist. I turned around and I said, oh, you want to be my campaign manager?
Thank you for the endorsement.
Yeah, I know, she said to me, oh, her husband, he's gonna kill me. You know, and the, the moderator said, don't think we've ever, ever had a candidate endorse another candidate on. In a debate. So, yeah, so you know, it, it happens. People sometimes just want to run, or I think she was compelled to run by her husband. It was, you know, he wasn't gonna run, he pushed her to run, and that was the only reason that she was there, but, yeah, I took her. He pushed her to run and that was the only reason that she was there. But yeah, I took her endorsement and ran with it.
And Alan, if, if I can maybe just go back to your previous question to Joe. Um, I think, you know, and, and I'm gonna speak truthfully because I think our, our audience majority, if I'm correct, are from diverse communities right now, uh, who are participating in this discussion. Um, you really have to have a public image. You have to have a branding. Um, you can't just run for the sake of running. Racism is real, discrimination is real. If you're counting on your community's vote alone, that's never enough. Because it's so difficult to get certain communities to even come out and vote when you're from those communities. So you have to reach all residents, all potential voters in the ward. People who actively participate. The demographic that actually goes out and votes is the demographic that you have to be able to connect with. And you know, Joe said, go knock on a couple of blocks and if you can't get through them, you better ask yourself why you're running. Well, I really think that we need more specific um, requirements to run. I, I, you know, the right, in a democracy, yes, you have the right to run for office. You know, if, if you fulfill certain basic criteria. But I think there should be some credibility to the candidates. You know, a candidate who can only get two votes shouldn't be populating a ballot unnecessarily.
Yeah.
You know, um, so having, you know, twenty, thirty, forty candidates on a ballot is absolutely ludicrous. When I ran in Ward four, I had another South Asian candidate older than me approach somebody and say, tell Rabia not to run and to support me because I can win. And that person said to him, I don't, I haven't, this guy, a friend said, I have no influence over her. She's gonna do what she wants to do. How can I tell her not to run? And, and that person who had the audacity to say that barely got eighty votes.
Yeah.
You know, so honestly, do yourselves a favor. If you're not gonna give it your all, you're not gonna give it a hundred percent, you're not gonna put in the money that it takes. There is a science to it. There is a formula in terms of how much you invest in terms of, you know, specifically money uh, in a campaign and a social, uh, running a campaign solely on social media is not giving you a realistic picture of who votes. Because social media has no boundaries.
Yep.
Right. I think, you have no idea who on social media responding to you, if they can vote for you.
Exactly.
And, and I think Rabia has hit on the biggest truth, especially in GTA politics. And if you look at, at the municipalities in other places, there are not twenty-six people on any ballot ever. But I think Rabia has hit on the truth that a lot of people think, you know, I know my particular community or I've been really active in my particular church group or group. And, and that should be able to carry me through. That works in nomination races for political parties. It's extraordinarily successful in those races. It is not at all successful in this. And, and, and the history of Mississauga, anyone can look on the public website at the, the record. And there are just litters of people who get fifty votes, a hundred votes. And I think a lot of the times they make that mistake. Uh, you need to appeal to everyone. You need to knock on every door. You need to show that you are open to everyone. And if you can't do that.
Yeah.
People want some praise.
Just wanted to add, uh, the city of Mississauga, if anyone's interested, does have past election results dating back to nineteen ninety-seven. However, I think I noticed there's a bit of a technical error right now and those, um, that information is not available. So, sorry councillor Sato, if I could put in a word there, if you get somebody at the, at the city.
Clerk's office.
Fix that. I think it'd be helpful for our audience. And if I could just add my own story about the quality of a candidate. Um, I helped out on a campaign for a uh, very young man um, that ran against uh, councillor Nando Unika twice in Ward seven. Um, let's just say he had a lot of good ideas, but I think um, his orient, like his um, the, the issues he focused on seemed better fit for maybe downtown or midtown Toronto rather than uh, suburban Mississauga um, audiences. So um, I don't think he was that serious at the end of the day in terms of actually wanting to win, especially in his third campaign, which I did not help out in. Uh, he ended up going from getting thirty-four hundred votes, which was actually a very strong second place to just barely around five hundreds. And that was on a ballot with about twelve people on an open seat. So uh, once those results come back up, uh, if you wanna go look up Ward seven, you'll know who I'm talking about. Uh, yeah, and I just wanna add, I put in uh, the chat, uh, a link about the eligibility requirements for running in municipal council in Ontario. So we mentioned, we, as uh, Rabia mentioned, eligibility requirement. So just putting this out there. You do not have to run in the ward that you live in. Now, ideally speaking, you probably should run in the ward that you live in. Um, but I guess if you have like a strong tie to a certain community that you may not live in, but you may work in or you volunteer in or you're, you know, if your nonprofit is uh, based out there and you frequent that area, then maybe there's an argument there to um, to uh, put forward as a candidate. Um, my final question before I think I move, will move on to questions from the audience, if anyone has any, is what would you do? Um, okay, what did you do before that you would do again? And what did you do in your campaign that you would not do again, if that makes sense? Uh, let's start with Rabia.
Oh, give me a chance to think. What would I?
Does anyone uh, wanna answer that question, if you have an answer?
What would I do? I think, you know, I would again, make sure to invest in getting the data I need, rather than trying to discover the data. Somebody said to me in the Ward four, in the Ward six election, that data is gold and I never understood what, what that meant. I understood it in Ward four because people had data from part, from other parties. That was very helpful. I didn't have that data. So I recognize the importance of that data. You know, either generating your own data, purchasing data or being involved in, in party politics where you have access to data, where you have supporters in that party, that will give you that data to, to leverage that particular vote. Um, what I wouldn't do next time? I won't run just for the hell of running. If I run again, it's to win.
Thank you, thank you Rabia. Um, Joe, did you have an answer to my question, if you understand it?
Uh, yeah, what would you do again and what would you not? I mean, I, so I think the things I did right. I, I knocked doors. Um, signs, I think were the thing I, in my first run, really reflected. And not that any one factor is the sole factor that anyone wins. But in that race, it certainly felt like the signs helped propel the outcome.
In, in, in Ward four, right?
In Ward four.
Yes, yes. There was a fine war.
Yes, and, and, and I wasn't part of the war, frankly. I, I think I bought two hundred signs and that was it. Um, which was a pale nothing compared to everybody else. Um, anyways, I, so I think the reason the signs matter in municipal elections, to go back to it is, again, you don't know what a Joe is. You don't know what a Rabia is. And so seeing our na- your name again says a little bit of kinda like, you know, what is Coke? What is Pepsi? Why do they bother plastering Coke and Pepsi everywhere? It's because by having it everywhere, you get to know that other people are drinking that drink too. So it's probably not gonna poison you. And it might even taste good. And so to put that in a political context, enough people have met this person, they're putting, putting a lawn sign on, he mustn't be crazy. Or, you know, like, so that's kind of, and again, municipal politics is different than party politics. You put the red sign, you put the blue sign, totally different reaction. And again, everything's fought up at the leaders level and the local campaign matters for none. Municipal politics, totally different thing. Um, you know, if you've been involved in party politics and municipal politics, you will quickly learn they are not the same thing. Um, so I, I think the things that I learned was getting out there, talking and honestly being involved with the signs because when you're unknown, it's one of the few ways. That and literature, like you need to distribute literature with things that are educational about you and why you're running and the topics that matter to you. Cause again, it's the only way that people will get a hold of you. And that's it.
Well, Pat, um, I'm not like, I mean, considering you've had a very credible winning track record, I don't know if you have a lot of answers for the question about what would you not do again? I mean, it seems like you've done everything right, judging by you stayed in office for thirty years, so.
Regrets, she had a few.
Maybe I'll give you the last, I'll give you the last word before I uh, turn it over to the audience for questions.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I can't think of anything that I wouldn't do again. Um, but uh, you know, what, things that I did that I think were effective, as Joe said, knocking on doors, especially the first campaign. And I'll tell you, I knocked on so many doors in that first campaign. And you know, and I, and I introduced, I think what you need to do is introduce yourself to the people at the door and tell them who you are within that community. As, as you were saying earlier, Joe, you need to have been doing stuff in the community and you need to let people know that. When I ran the first time, what I was hearing is I went to the door. First of all, they were pleased I was a woman because there have been always men representing the ward. So they were pleased to see a woman, even the men said that. Um, but it was also what, you know, quite a few people said, you know, you have volunteered for so many years to help build our community and it's about time that you got rewarded for it. You know, it's like, okay, I, I wasn't looking at it as a reward, but um, but there was a gratification there that people recognized that I had been a volunteer. And I was, had done a lot in the community as a volunteer for many, many years and was then running for office. So that, that I found was a really big selling point for me. And I'm mentoring, I, I offered to mentor when I said I wasn't gonna run again. Um, I asked people, if you're interested in running for office, contact me and, you know, and I've met with quite a few people. And I've been very realistic with them as we've been talking tonight, what they can expect. And several of them, you know, went home, thought about it and came back and said, nah, you know, talk to family, no, it's not for us. Um, I, I have a young man right now that I'm mentoring quite seriously. And uh, he's doing all the stuff that, uh, that we're talking about tonight. You know, he's been involved in the community and I've said to him, as you said, Joe, you know, he's been following along with all the council meetings. He's coming to any meeting that I've had. And you know, I'm gonna be, I mean, I, I need, I'll be voting for the next person too. And I'm gonna be looking for the person who I want to represent me. But I don't want the person who's looking at it as a political stepping stone. I don't want it as the person who's just going to par, kinda parachute in and say, hey, I'm here, you know, I want this. I want the person who has actually put some effort into it, who has come to the meetings that I've been holding. And you know, they're advertised really well, so there's no excuse for someone to have never attended a planning commi- a planning meeting in the community or any other meeting. And I know who's been especially, I mean, I know it when we're in public anyway, but the names are there on virtual as well. And I know there's a few people that are still thinking of running for office there and they've never, ever been to a meeting that has been held. So where is your commitment? You know, I like, that's what I'm asking. If you're really serious, then you should have been and not just starting next year. You know, what have you been doing the last two, three, four years since I announced I wasn't going to run again? Because there was a plenty of opportunity and I expect there's gonna be a lot of people running and uh, in Ward nine, because we're gonna, you know, again, it'll be a lot of candidates. And it won't take a big percentage to win. So, you know, I think the person who's going to really do it, they really need to focus in and, you know, get that data. Look at how many votes you're going to need and really work hard to get those votes.
Uh, thank you very much councillor Sato. Um, so actually that brings, brings me to the end of my line of questions. I, I see uh, there's a couple of questions in the chat. But I think, Creminder, um, I believe you wanted to turn it over to some of our members from Engage Peel to see if they have any questions for our guests. Joe is technically a member of Engage Peel, but I don't think he can ask himself questions, so. I don't know, does anyone out there have questions for our panelists? And if you have a question, uh, please go down to the reaction button at the bottom and click raise hand and I will acknowledge you. And then you can ask, uh, looks like uh, Tejas has a question. So Tejas, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, questions mainly for Rabia. Uh, you mentioned uh, that you um, did not have data. Uh, and that was a big handicap. Could you elaborate on that? What, because I believe that everybody gets voter's list, so you know who is eligible and where they live. But uh, beyond that, uh, I wasn't, I'm not clear on what else uh, uh, is helpful. So you should uh, talk about that.
You get a voter's list of eligible voters. You don't get a list of active voters. So, you know, when, when you have data that's coming from political parties, that data is often linked to people who are, who actively engage, who go out and vote for a particular party, who are members of a particular party, right? So, so they are politically active. When you get a voter list, you're getting every voter in the ward.
Right. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, look, I'm, sorry Alan, if I may jump in on the same question rather than repeating it. So um, councillor Sato and obviously uh, Rabia and Joe, uh, do you think the city data should be of a better quality rather than giving a list of eligible voters? It should also say, uh, in addition to that, uh, if that voter has voted in the last one, two, three, four, five elections.
It can't, it can't.
So Canada, Canada, yeah, Canada.
You can't give that information.
Yeah, that, that's private.
Protected by privacy.
There's a huge difference between the States and Canada. So if you wanna know anyone who voted for anything anywhere in the United States, it's open data. I can go tell you if Bill Gates has voted his entire life. And you can go look at it as public data. Canada, not at all. We do not share that. When you get the list, another thing that's missing that's uh, important is phone numbers.
Yeah.
So you have Joe lives at this address, fantastic. Uh, how do I get a hold of him other than going to the door knocking? I, I would say phones have become less and less valuable because fewer and fewer people answer a landline. Um, you know, so that's one thing I'd say. So that's one piece of data. I mean, the party side of things, that's not readily shared or like accessed. You, data like that, outside of the actual campaign period where volunteers have access to get limited data to go to a neighborhood's level of data. No one can access that but like a sitting person or a riding chair. I mean, people can accumulate lists because when they volunteer, well, I, you asked me to call through the membership list, so I kept the membership list. I think that's where a lot of data comes from in terms of engaging at that level. Or people who've run for other things like a nomination will have data disclosed to them. I, I mean, a big, it is a big advantage for a councillor to, to know, again, to have those lists from the previous time and say, for instance, mark the sign locations where they had a sign. It's a good idea to go back to that sign, I would argue. Um, but even on that, like, you know, over a four-year period, something like twenty percent of the houses will turn over. So even for an incumbent, twenty percent of your list is garbage every single time. Uh, and then I think the other thing, logistically, that uh, councillor Sato had mentioned is past lists from the city have been coming from MPAT. So the municipal assessment. So in a place like Ward four, where there's a ton of high-rise apartments, that's garbage. Because the person who owns the condo is not the person who lives.
Yeah, doesn't live there.
So it's garbage. Um, and, and it, that's definitely bigger in some wards than others. Ward four is high-rise heaven. So, you know, um, it's more impactful there than say, you know, So, you know, um, it's more impactful there than say, you know, another ward that's more, um, standalone houses.
One, one of the things that you, that you can get information on and as Alan mentioned earlier, the results of previous elections. Now, in the last one, because we went to vote anywhere, um, since that election, that information is not as valid, but what I would do every election, I would go back and I would look at the results per, by the poll.
Yeah.
So I would see how many votes I got at a specific poll because then I knew what neighborhood. And if there was one that I felt, and I, I don't think I ever lost a poll except in the first campaign, but I would look at, I would, no, well, yeah, okay. I would look at the numbers. So, you know, if I saw one poll that, that another candidate did quite well, um, then I would look and I'd say, well, I need to focus on that particular neighborhood this time. Because I need to increase it because, you know, there were this amount of people that did not vote for me. So I want to go back in there. So, you know, that's, that's where poll data from the previous election can help. And, you know, you can use it. I mean, it's, it's not as how, as I said, twenty eighteen, we went to vote anywhere to make it easier. So the poll information is not as valid because you don't know. Somebody that lives in Meadowvale might have voted down in Port Credit. You know, so you're not going to get that information. But you can go back to campaigns, even though it's eight-year-old data. And you can see, you know, in the case of you're running against an incumbent, you can see maybe where that incumbent maybe didn't do as well. You know, and you might want to go in there and really hammer away and take more votes away during that time. Because if they didn't do well two terms ago, they may not have done as well the last term. So I, I, you know, I think you can still get some of that information on the twenty eighteen. It's not as good. Um, I love the way it was before, but you know, for data, I mean, that's, it was good for getting the data. But it was not as convenient for the voters, so, um, but that's really about the only way you're going to get information.
Uh, Herminda, did you have any more question?
Um, I think because the data was, um, mentioned as Google, which it is. So I just want to, Rabia mentioned, uh, made a comment that you get hold of data or even buy the data. So Rabia, um, I, I'm not sure how do you buy the data.
Well, when I'm talking about buying data, I'm talking about like, you know, because the city's list only gives you addresses. Um, but to Joe's point, you know, phone numbers aren't always, uh, answered these days. You can buy data that comes with phone numbers.
Yeah. So you can go to a, for instance, like a public polling or political engagement company. Uh, and you pay to buy the phone numbers to match your list and then, you know, that gives you possible options of reaching out to those people. But again, those lists are sometimes even worse, like you don't know what you're buying, right? And so if, if you contract with the firm to say, um, I'm going to leave a voicemail, a voicemail, can you send it to a thousand people's doors? You don't know how many got. You don't, you have no idea how many got to the phones, right? You don't know if the person still got the same phone number and lives in Sarnia. You don't know.
Yep, that's, that's, that's very true. So face-to-face contact is really it, in whichever way, shape or form.
Yep.
Oh, phone, phone data is going, helps to some degree. Um, I, I do, um, I do very, very few robo calls because quite frankly, people don't like them. Um, but I have found that, uh, if I do a robo call on a specific issue, if there's a meeting coming up, that I get an amazing response at that meeting because people, they answer the call. You know, even though it's a robo call, they'll pick it up and they might hear your name. But when you look at the number of numbers, phone numbers that you get, you know, I have twenty-one thousand or twenty-three thousand households. And my phone data for a robo call that I pay for is about twenty-three hundred. So it's, it's not very high, you know, um, but, uh, but at least you're getting that number of calls out and it's not specific to the ward. It goes by postal code and wards don't go by postal code, they overlap. So same with mailouts, you know, you're going to get some overlap through things as well. So I mean, there's, there's all these ways of doing it. None of them are perfect.
And, and I think, you know, one of the things we've touched on with Rabia has mentioned and Councilor Sato just mentioned right now about, about dollars. And I think, you know, if people are considering running, I think you really have to have a serious line of thought. Like, Councilor Sato, I think, said, you know, she took out a loan for her first campaign and five thousand dollars was a good chunk of money back in nineteen ninety-one. I, I think you really have to be realistic with yourself, you know. Should money determine if you run? Well, in an ideal world, no, but in a real world, it has to. Cause there's just a minimum things of signs and literature that you need to do. And if you can't legitimately say to yourself that I can find ten friends to donate a thousand dollars, don't run. If you can't run a campaign of at least a ten thousand dollar size, you know, unless you're again, going for an issue and the point is to advocate for an issue, you're not going to be in contention at all. And, and again, all the public, uh, dollars that you can see, I, I think that was, yeah, Rabia was going, like, you can see past winners and losers, how much did they spend, how much did not spend? You'll quickly see a correlation.
Yeah, yeah, at least four dollars a vote.
Yeah, I mean, it depends. And, and not everybody needs to spend a campaign limit. That's, I'm not saying that either.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you have to be Bill Gates to just reference him again, but I mean, I don't think anyone on the call here has a famous last name. And, and barring that, you need to be able to get your name out there, get your message out there and that costs money.
If, if, if you are not a known name, if you're not an incumbent and you're not a known name, you have to be prepared to spend it to the maximum limit in order to get your name out there in print, in media, at the doors.
Yeah, I think that's helpful.
Buy the services you need and buy the materials you need to make your name very visible to people.
Yeah, if I can add, I think, um, if you are, you have been considering running even before we, before, before this year, um, it would, it's helpful to keep your name in the community. Joe mentioned, uh, his involvement with Armon House. So that's a, you know, nonprofits and Rabia does all of her endeavors. And of course, Councilor Sado is on council, so she's always a, a public face, so she, she can't avoid the community if she, if even she wanted to. Um, so I mean, also I think I'm gonna move on. There's some interesting questions here in the chat. And, uh, let me s- see if, uh, so I think there was a question about how, how do you, uh, get yourself well-known in the community? Um, I think some of that has been addressed.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I'd say even like, I've, I've met so many people through like my children's sports leagues.
Right.
Like, am I going there to make votes? Of course not. That's ridiculous. But you get to know people you otherwise would not get to know.
Right. Uh, okay. Um, so our friend Moaz has a question for Councilor Sado. Can Councilor Sado speak to the skills needed to work with residents, staff and other members of council? Also, can she outline the differences between Mississauga and Peel Regional Council? Because if you're running for as, at least in Mississauga, if you're running to become a Mississauga City Councilor, you automatically become a member of Regional Peel Council. So perhaps if Councilor Sado could explain the fundamentals of that, because I don't think a lot of people realize when you're running for city council, you're also running for another position that you may not know about.
Yeah, I, I, I've found over the years that a lot of people don't even know the region appeal exists and they don't know that that's the job they're running for because they never mention it. Um, and if you ask them a question, what does the region appeal do, there, um, um, you know, big question mark. I think nowadays, everybody knows that, uh, health is at the region appeal level, but, um, you know, that's about it. Um, residents still don't know, you know, I, I get the emails saying the city is doing this to my garbage collection. And you know, the city hasn't picked up garbage since nineteen eighty-nine, I think, when we moved it up to the region appeal. And all the notices come from the region appeal. The average citizen doesn't know, doesn't care. You know, um, i- if somebody calls my office, I don't care whether they're asking about the region or the city. That's not, you know, that's my job is to, to know who to send the question to. But, um, i- it's, uh, it's, it's really difficult, I think, for a candidate to get as much of a grip on the region appeal and what it does. I think they have to take an even greater step. Because the region appeal is basically located in Brampton. It, you know, the building is there, we don't have offices there. There's kind of that separation of the regional staff to regional council. There, there's not the same connection because, as we have with city to city. So, you know, if, if most residents don't know the difference, most candidates won't know the difference. And all I can say is, you know, I like, on my website, I have a who does what. And I use it when I, well, I used to go up to schools. Um, I would print that page and take it out for the kids. And I would talk about, you know, my role as a regional counselor, my role as a city counselor, which to me is my role as a counselor for, for the ward, because, because to me, it's the same thing. But, you know, it, I would, um, that's available for anyone to see. They can see which, uh, which level of government does whatever. And, you know, candidates, I, I've, I've found over the years, many candidates are woefully uninformed.
Yes.
And they don't do, as Hazel would say, they just don't do their homework. You know, you ask them a question about something and they, they don't have a clue because they have not looked into it. So, you know, you've got to go on the region's website, you know, go to my website, see, uh, see that chart and then go in and, you know, look at each of those departments at the region appeal and see what issues there are. There are huge issues at the region. I mean, social services, health, waste management. You know, ambulance service is at the region appeal. Welfare services and childcare, all of those services that really hit people are at the region appeal. Roads are there too, but everybody assumes they're all city roads, you know, same with traffic. I mean, there's, it doesn't matter, you know, who manages the roads. But I think, um, everybody assumes, I should say, everybody, majority of people assume that the city does everything. And it's very difficult getting that message across and, and at the end of the day, they don't care. So if you're going to run for office, learn the issues that are at the region appeal, those big projects, those big issues, because when you go to the door, you know, if you've got someone that's got little kids, talk about childcare, public health, things like that, because that's probably important to them. Try to get them off the school issue because they think we're responsible for schools as well. But, you know, learn to gauge the people that are at the door and what issues you think. And you can usually tell from one sentence what issues are, are important to them. So I know I kind of rambled a little bit, um, was beyond your, um, beyond your question, but, um, yeah, do you want me to answer the other one for him? What skills you need?
Yeah, yeah, if you could briefly touch on that.
You have to be very tactful. You also, uh, to work with residents, you need to be tactful. And one thing I've always said to my staff is no matter how minor the issue may feel, you know, at the, at that point in time to that person, it is probably the most important thing to them. So it may be a really tiny little thing. It could be a tree that's, needs a little bit of pruning. And to our staff, that's not a big issue. You know, it's all their thing. To, to us, it may not be a big issue. To them, it is the most important thing in their lives and it's probably every time they look at it, they get really stressed and really upset. So you treat them with that respect and that's really important. When it's working with staff and other members of council, you show them respect, but you also stick to your guns. And you, you make your point and you try to win support. I don't lobby. I, I don't believe in lobbying. I don't like the idea of going, you know, down the hall, begging for votes, trading votes, that kind of thing. I, I, I don't do that. But if, I feel if you're going to sway council, you go to that council meeting or whatever meeting it is, you have all of your facts, you, if it's money you're looking for, you have a business case and you lay it out and you make it so that it's almost impossible for anybody to vote against it. So to me, that's really the best way of dealing with things.
Joe, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I was, cause a couple of thoughts. Um, first off, I'd say just one thing we maybe haven't touched on tonight is, uh, school board is another great opportunity where you can affect some really great change. Um, I'm not the person to sell that particular one, but I think that's another thing people should consider about if they want to contribute to the community. But I think Councilor Sado touched on a lot of things, like if you're thinking about running for municipal council, you have to care about the stop sign. You have to care, like trees, you mentioned trees, that must have been one of the number one things that I heard at the door. And if you don't care that somebody's tree is dead on their boulevard, God help you, just do not run for municipal politics. Because as she, she absolutely said it the right way. It is the most important thing. They look at it every single day. Like, if you don't care about the raccoons that are getting into their trash and you think that that's beneath you to get involved, too bad, you're a city council. If you think it's to stand on stage and go like this at Mississauga Square and, and just people to read your name off and maybe you could go to a special dinner, don't run for office. You know, so the nice thing about municipal politics is you can affect change directly. That stop sign's not right, you can fix a stop sign. At national level, you can't say, geez, national defense is a mess. I need to buy more tanks. You can't do that kind of thing. At municipal level, you can have the direct effect change, which is why I think it's so attractive to run. You know, you can affect things that matter to people directly, but you've got to care about the small stuff. It's not just standing on stage.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's very true. I mean, a lot, and again, it goes back to the point. I think a lot of people run and just, they don't really know what the job is about, you know, my, I mean, I think my greatest fear is like, somebody coming in with a lot of money and it's, it, they somehow manage to use it and just blanket a ward with flyers and then somehow get into offices and that's, I think, I think, Councilor Sado, that might be your worst fear because.
I could, I could say though, in Ward, in Ward four, yeah, in Ward four against Rabia and myself, there was one person who spent heck of a lot of money and you can easily go look it up and was really involved about sex education.
Okay.
That is not a municipal issue. We, we had another candidate who also spent a, a reasonable amount of money, who was going to build a subway to Square One, which is fantastic if you're the Minister of Transportation.
Yeah, for, for, yeah, just for the record, uh, just for full disclosure, I volunteered on Joe's campaigns, um, both of them, I think. And I know what he's talking about, so, yeah. Um.
They may be nice people, but that's not a city council. And neither is immigration and neither is a lot of other things that people bring.
Uh, we had another question from, I think Jasmine, she's asking, it feels as if civic engagement is more fractured than.
Rabia, I think you're, you're.
Rabia, sorry, you wanted to add.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, Joe, you reminded me of something and I, and I have to tell this funny little story. So I literally ran into a candidate in my neighborhood. And I said, don't bother knock, I, I live here and I said, and don't bother knocking on that door because it's my parents. They didn't believe me. And they went and knocked on my parents' door. And my parents said, she's my daughter, while I stood there. Oh my gosh, that was one of my fun memories.
Oh.
Robbie, Rabia, I, I, to give you one of my fun memories, I had one of our former MPPs say to me that, uh, when he was out door knocking and campaigning, he said, I got yelled at by people because they thought I was running against you, Pat. I said, and that made me feel good.
Uh, so I have, I have a question here from Jasmine. Uh, she's asking, she wrote, wrote in the chat box, it feels as if civic engagement is more fractured than ever, partly because of some candidates focused on using social media through enga, engagement. What do you think is a good way for candidates to reach the largest amount of voters? Um, I think Rabia mentioned before she knocked on every door in the ward. Um, sometimes that's possible, sometimes it's not. It just depends on the size of the ward, the population, like how many people you can actually reach. Um, I don't know if any of you want to a- a- address that question, like, is there, uh, like, what's, what's the best way to reach the largest amount of voters? Um, because social media, I think we know is not as effective as we all think it is.
I, I, I think a couple of things I would say, Alan, is I think trying to write for the paper, for the newspaper is, is still equally important. Whether it's online or actually in some of the. Whether it's online or actually in some of the print copies that go out, ro- writing columns, opinion pieces. Um, you know, talking about the issues that you care about, that the community cares about at large. Uh, putting your opinion out there in print is, is really, really important. And that doesn't cost you anything but your skills, you know, and your knowledge. Um, if, if, if you can write the right piece, chances are you can get the Mississauga News or the Pointer or somebody to pick it up and publish it. Um, go to events in the ward. You know, there, there's lots of outdoor events and activities happening. Go and connect with people, just reach out to people, you know? If you can afford it, throw a, throw a street party or a barbecue to get to know your neighborhood and community. Right? That's, that's a way to meet more people. But in, in the middle of a campaign, you got a door knock.
Actually, that's interesting, Rabia, because that's actually one of the other questions from someone named John. Uh, they're asking, does it make sense going door knocking, let's say, two years before an election to get to know people? Now, um, I just want to put it out there, the rules state, you can't actively campaign, I think, until you actually register as a candidate. In Ontario, the registration begins May and ends in, uh, I think for like twenty eighteen, it ended in August. Uh, before it started in January, it went all the way to September, but now the nomination period, as they call it, is shortened. So until you actually become a candidate, you can't actually go knocking on doors, asking.
You can't spend any money.
Can't spend any money. So I think what the questioner is asking, like, does it make sense to like go knock doors and just get to know people? Um, before an election, so.
You know how I got to know people?
Yeah, please.
I, I got to know people when I fought a developer in my backyard. I got to know my neighbors over that. Actually, I kind of forgot, that was part of the reason of why I ran in Ward Four. Was because I fought a developer. You know, um, if there's a cause, if there's something going on at City Hall, if you're getting some communication coming that you think people should care about, go talk to your neighbors. Go knock on doors and talk to them. So you know, if, if you're wondering about the notice that came from the region appeal about some, oh, insurance or whatever they want you to buy for your outdoor plumbing, I don't know, they, they sent something around. Go talk to neighbors, find out what, how they feel about it. Are they buying it? Are they, uh, you know, are, 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 are they even caring about it? Do, did they even look at the letter? So, so just find ways to make conversation over an actual issue in the neighborhood. You can always go knock on doors and talk to people, you know? And I did a street party, I had to go knock on doors to tell people that we were going to do a street party and get their signatures for it to, 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 to allow the city to give us a permit to close the street. So you could always knock on doors.
Yeah, Rabia makes a great point. There's always something to advocate for, right? Is the parking on your street not right? Is the park in your local community needs some fix-ups or upgrades? Um, do you need a dog park in the area? There's always something. Is there a developer you need to fight? You got to have a reason. You can't just show up at people's doors for no reason going, hi, how you doing? Like, A, you're forgettable. So I mean, the only thing you learn basically is if you hate door knocking or like door knocking. But you got to have a reason.
Yeah, I mean, you got to be able to sell something, you know, that, I mean, in this case, selling yourself. But, you know, it's probably easier to sell a product.
And, and engaging with something teaches you something about the process.
Exactly.
I, I think going forward, you know, and even into twenty twenty-two for the election. Um, I think people are going to be a lot more reluctant to answer the door and talk to candidates at the door because of COVID. Even if it's over, there's still, I think there's still going to be that lingering. And I know, I think, um, from what I heard, we, we saw that in the federal election. Although the weather was good, so people could be outside. But, you know, there, there may be, going forward, there may be that. But, um, you know, one, one of the other ways, I, I just want to answer that question. What is a good way to reach the largest number of voters? And it costs money, but that is by mail. And even if I'm outdoor knocking every door, um, if I have enough money in my campaign, I also do a mail-out to the entire ward. And I do it to, especially to get into the apartments, because door knocking in apartments is, is really, really tough. But the voter turnout from apartments is also very low. So you could spend a tremendous amount of time door knocking in apartments, although you're indoors, at least it's warm. Um, with, with very little outcome from it. So, you know, for, for my ward, um, I would spend, um, I, I guess I was mailing out about twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand flyers. And I would do one, one brochure, brochure always would be mailed. And it would probably, it might or might not be the same one that I went door-to-door with, but it would have everything in it. It would be a big one. And postage for that was probably something in the range of about three thousand dollars. And then printing on top of that. So, um, it's, it's a big chunk of the campaign money. But it guarantees that you will get into every single mailbox. And in the new parts of the city like mine, when you go door-to-door, you may not have a mailbox if they're not home. And I would write a little note on every card. I never stamped it. I always wrote it as I went to the door. Sorry, I missed you and signed it. And I would put it in the mailbox. The doors, a lot of the doors don't have mailboxes because they pick it up at the super mailbox. And anything that goes in that mailbox is junk mail, because they don't get Canada Post. So to get into those houses, to be sure that you're going to be read, like, I never win my own front door. So, you know, I check my mailbox because I get door-to-door mail. But if I didn't, I go, we go in through the garage, you know? So anything that would go in there, if I didn't get mail, would be junk mail and I probably wouldn't look at it. So the mailing gets it into every door. If you can afford it, it is the best way to get your name out there and to get it in there.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Sato. Um, actually, we're just, uh, going to wrap up because, uh, we're hitting our, almost an hour and a half mark now. Um, so once again, I want to thank, uh, our guests, Counselor Pat Sato from Ward Nine in Mississauga, Joe Horneck and Rabia Hutter. Um, thank you very much for, um, joining us in here at Disengaged P O Virtual Town Hall. Um, I hope that this session provides some, you know, fundament, like some basic, uh, um, details and, uh, education about people who are interested in maybe running for municipal office next year or any other office down the road. Uh, just to let everyone know that, um, the, the things we talked about here, it's not restricted to just PO region. If you live in the GTA or is, you know, at least somewhere else in Ontario and are interested in running for municipal council, what we discussed is, um, you know, they, they, they pretty much just watch uniform across the board for most communities. Um, it, it may differ a bit in terms of maybe if you live in a rural area. Maybe you have a more connected community, first of all, versus, versus a, uh, much more populated area. But these are some things to think about as, uh, next year, uh, because, you know, it's not just running for office that, um, allows for engagement, is also allows, um. You have to, you also have to like, as Counselor Sato said, uh, attend meetings and participate, uh, in your community and other ways. And just, uh, keep yourself informed and educated and hopefully that's what we at Engage P O plan to do in the coming months ahead. To provide more education about, uh, municipal government and how it works and we'll have more speakers lined up, hopefully, um, down the road for more town halls to provide more education. And maybe, who knows, uh, you know, with this format, we could probably host an all candidates debate at some point when the campaign rolls on. So once again, I want to thank our guests and, uh, thank you everyone for attending. Um, Herminda, did you want, did you have anything to add before we close?
Uh, not really, actually, I just would like to say the same thing. Uh, we definitely appreciate, um, all the time Joe, Rabia and Confluent Sato took out. It's a really, really valuable information and one of the core principles uh, for Engage P O is to, uh, provide that kind of mentorship, education for, uh, young and new community leaders. Thank you so much for coming. Thanks.
Thank you.